I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the public which stands in our nation and to God, who is the law, and who rules over all.
Please make standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Smurl.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report for Year-to-Date, September 9, 2024, and Year-to-Year Comparison Report for September 7, 2023 to September 9, 2024. 3B, Controller's Report for the Month Ending August 31, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I just have one announcement. For next week's caucus, we're going to have PA American Water is going to be attending. I think both, we're going to have stormwater and sewage, Frank. So if anybody from the public has any questions about PA water, please get those questions over to council so we could ask them while they're here in person. Thank you.
Frank, with respect to that, in reference to the project going on on North Washington Avenue and Evelyn Street, can you find out from PA American Water? I believe, not sure if we got this answer, we didn't get a direct answer. I want to know what's flowing through those pipes: water, sewage, and is leachate going through it?
I'll get those answers for you.
I would appreciate if you'd ask them each of those three questions, and I want an answer of yes or no for each of them.
I'll have that for you tomorrow.
And when their anticipated completion date, that is, if you could.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, would you like another one from PA American Water, or would you like me to wait till 5?
No, in the interim, I'm asking them questions all along.
All right, I got a call on 902 West Elm Street. So in front of the address at 902 West Elm, there's a steel plate that's covering a basin. It's an American Water basin. It's been there for over a year. So we could, can we also contact them and get that basin repaired?
I'll send them out, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so this Saturday, there's Pause in the Park Adoption Fair. So it's a collaborative event featuring several, several local animal welfare groups. You can adopt cats, kittens, and dogs. There's a lot of raffles, and it starts at 11:00. And also, this past Sunday, I attended a very well-attended fundraiser, Raising Health for Hoppy fundraiser. The amount, this was for our firefighter, that's, you know, fighting stage four, throat cancer, but the amount of support shown for Lieutenant Hopkins was unbelievable and very moving. One of the many things I love about Scranton and its community is how they always rise to the occasion and show overwhelming support for one of their own. So I'm very proud of that, very proud of them. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First is, Glennis Johns, Glennis, you had signed the original slip before we put it out. You still wish to speak?
Yes.
Absolutely, come on.
Well, good evening, council. It's great to stand here before you this afternoon or evening. I'm here today to express my profound disappointment with the 2024 Scranton Community Health and Safety Landscape Analysis, 115-page report prepared by Mofahan, a Washington DC-based nonprofit, at a cost of nearly $70,000 to the city. This report was intended to be the first step in understanding and addressing critical issues such as gang violence, youth violence, and other forms of crime, as well as to provide strategic solutions for our city. However, despite the high stakes and funding involved, this analysis fails far short of what Scranton needs to effectively address these challenges. The report provides a supposed as-is assessment of the community and outlines national best practices, but it lacks a clear, actionable strategies that were, we were hoping to have to move Scranton forward. I personally involved, I was personally involved in this project from the beginning. The city administration reached out to me multiple times in February, which is also Black History Month, very busy time for me and my organization, for interviews and consultations, to the point where I felt almost pressured and harassed into giving my time. Despite offering my lived experience and deep insight as someone who works very, who works every day to improve the community health and safety in Scranton, the meeting felt like a significant waste of my energy. I asked Mofahan for details about their research methods and strategic approaches, but their responses were very vague at best, and today also emphasized that. The lack of clarity in their responses is fully reflective of the final report, which is riddled with issues. For example, key data in the report are not properly sourced, leaving us to question the validity of their findings. The graphs and charts are often unreasonable or poorly put together. Figure 3, for example, which is meant to illustrate service calls, service calls is an example of a graph that is both unclear and cut off. Additionally, the report claims a 50% increase in calls for suicide attempts, but provides no clear source data to back this claim. And I think that's important, considering suicide is something that has been affecting, someone I know has been affected by that, but also I just think it's kind of lazy and sloppy to just put things out there without concise information on where you got it. These are not minor oversights. They undermine the entities, they undermine the entire report's credibility. Beyond these technical issues, the report feels detached from Scranton's unique challenges. The application of the CREWS method for identifying risk and protective factors, for example, could have been copied and pasted into any other municipality's report. Scranton deserves better than this generic analysis that does not take our local context into account. While I appreciate the mention of improvements like proactive police work and updating hiring policies, this document fails to provide the strategic clarity and concrete steps needed to address the real root causes of violence in Scranton. The high-risk factors listed in the report, housing, education, health risks, and income inequality, are not new problems, and this report does not provide innovative or effective solutions to them. As someone who has spent years working in the field and with a background in sociology, having earned a master's degree from St. John's University, I can tell you that the report would not have passed in an academic setting, and let alone, in an academic setting, let alone justify the nearly $70,000 price tag with the Federal American Plan, with the Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. Scranton's residents deserve much more for this investment, and I hope to hear a full explanation, but we didn't. I hope to hear a full explanation, but it kind of fell short. I have one more minute, and I did give three examples, they didn't stick around, but I gave three examples on where this information was lacking. One, I felt like it was very much a copy and paste. We never really got, they never explained what CREWS was, which means Community Resilience Early Warning Systems. I was very curious about how the city or the SPD gave the data, like what kind of data package was provided to them. There was unreliable graphs and poor presentation. An example of that is on page 33. That figure talks about what I just mentioned, about certain data. And then the last point I'll just mention briefly, too, is the lack of data resources for major claims. An example for that is on page 42 to page 43. And I can go on and on and on, and it was just really disappointing to kind of sit there and look and see graphs cut off, you don't really know what you're looking at. And I did actually call them and recommend that we had this meeting because I was just in awe by the fact that they truly didn't care. They put one slide up here, no data, they gave us no information that wasn't already shared publicly. They could barely describe what they did for our city. And so I think we should still hold them accountable and ask them to give, they didn't even pass out any to you to have in public. So it feels very sopply done, and I will yield the floor here. Thank you for listening to me and my concerns, and thank you, everybody. I appreciate us for trying to make this city more safe and understand why there is violence in the city, but that could have been a better approach, and I'm happy to continue the conversation with the SPD, the city, and I just hope that the rest of the community goes and takes a look at this document so you can see exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies for records, I have one here.
Just give them to Kathy, and she'll give them to us. Joan Hodewanis?
Joan Hodewanis, Scranton. What Glennis said, ditto. Friday, September 20, is National POW MIA Recognition Day, and it's going to be held at 4:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Park, which is at the entrance of Scranton High School. And I don't know if you know this, but in the course of our nation's history, we estimate there have been 80,000 missing in action service members. Of that number, we figured there are 38,000 have the potential to be recovered. Now, I love it when they raise the Irish flag for St. Patrick's Day and the Italian flag for La Festa, but do you think we could take that POW MIA flag, that's right next to the American flag, and fly it on Friday in honor of POWs and all our missing in action service people? Whisper that into the mayor's ear, please. Union contracts are still not available online, and do we know if the DPW negotiations have started? Their contract expires this year?
I don't know if they've begun, Joan.
I hope they do. I did note, however, from the Controller's Report that Offburg got another $27,000, and I also noted Item 5I in your agenda, the LSA grant of $150,000 for the digitization of city records. That's fine, but first you got to have a record to digitize, so we need to get going on these union contracts, or we're going to turn around and would be renegotiating in 2026 and still waiting for the expired contract to be printed. Any information on the status of the annual audit?
They say it's still on track. The only one we're waiting for would be the parking authority.
Okay, and how about the investigation to the records that were dumped into Dick's court?
I don't know the status of that. I did ask.
Can you tell me whether or not the results of that investigation will be made public?
That, I don't know that, Joan. I did pose that question, and I have not received an answer for that.
Okay. Item 5H, the Operations and Facility Usage Assessment. You know, somehow I have this bad feeling that this, this is being done to justify expanding City Hall into another building. I hope that's not the case, but if we do acquire another building based on this assessment, is it going to be open to the public? I would like to know that. And apparently, this assessment, you know, look at efficiency and want to better serve the public. One of the ways to better serve the public is to give the public access. That would go a long way. Item 5K, the MOU on Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Program. I looked at the scope of work, and it said it covers Scranton and Lackawanna County. Who has been coordinating with Lackawanna County?
The city of Scranton had met with Lackawanna County, the DA's office, the Assistant DA.
So there is ongoing coordination?
Yes.
And does Lackawanna County intend to, you know, put any funding towards this effort?
Yes, they are going to put in half.
Well, that's good. Let's see. Item 5L, the MOU on Tourism, the Office Experience. When did the office go off the air?
I don't know.
It's been at least 10 years, hasn't it?
I don't know.
Well, I'm just wondering whether younger generations even, you know, have seen it or know what that's all about. Scranton tomorrow, are they going to track visitor data and disclose that data to the public so we can see that this initiative is paying a dividend to us? I hope they do. And can we put the Biden home and the Biden Presidential Library on the tourism map? That would be nice. I'm laughing at that one. Item 5J, the Gateway Signature Branded Signs. I think that's a wonderful initiative, but before that, and a higher priority, is street and traffic signs, which are a matter of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Next is Gideon Diaz.
Frank, back in July, early August, I sent an email asking, or inquiring about the investigations, both the one, the data breach, and also the Lips Department.
We didn't receive a reply as yet.
Okay, if we could just follow up on that.
I will, sir.
Thank you. Diaz. No, T-I-A-S, your last name? No, nobody here? No, all right. Les Spindler?
Evening, Scranton. Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, Scranton resident homeowner, and I don't eat dogs. 7D, we're giving a grant of $157,500 to the University of Scranton. They take so many buildings off the tax rolls. Why are we giving them all this money? They need that money like I need another head. It's ridiculous. They take all these buildings off the tax rolls. They said, when the, all they do is lie. When Chipback Funeral Home was being sold, they said they weren't interested in it. I came to this podium, and I said, you watch, they're going to buy that building. They did, and now they're took it off the tax rolls, they're putting another building up. They don't need $157,000. Give it to somebody else that needs it. Next thing. Years ago, when Sheets wanted a build on Linden Street, parents of the students at Scranton High came to this meeting, and said, oh, they're going to cause car traffic jams, blah, blah, blah. And I came to this meeting, and I said, Sheets won't cause a traffic jam, it's the parents going picking up their kids. Go by Scranton High School, 3 o'clock every day. They're lined up on 7th Avenue, parked illegally. There's a spot for buses to park, then they're parked all along 7th Avenue, almost back to Memorial Stadium. There's a line about this wide from the curb. They're parked there, they're halfway into the traffic lane, blocking traffic, and it's not Sheets causing the traffic jams, it's the parents or the kids going to that school, and it's a safety issue. I try to avoid that, but sometimes I go by, and they're all parked illegally. There's signs, no parking, and they park there. The police should sit there and ticket them all. Next thing, I'm tired of talking about this. Next month's going to be two years that I was promised our corner was going to be fixed, and still nothing's done. It'll, pretty soon it'll be winter, another year will pass, so I don't know what's going to happen there, but it's ridiculous. The mayor gets her street paved, but when the taxpayers want something done, nothing's done. And I'll say it again, if Tom Priambo was the DPW director, stuff would have been taken care of. I wouldn't have had to wait years to get our corner fixed, which I was promised by the, the one of the people from DPW two years ago that it was going to be fixed. So I don't know what has to be done, but that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler. And then Bowles Street was added to the stormwater work that's going to be done in the Tripp Park North Scranton area, so that did get added to that map, so I know it doesn't help you immediately, but it may help you in the long run.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. On E, up in AOG, they need refrigeration and coolers and freezers there. I've attempted to donate dog food and cat food to them on numerous occasions, fresh pet, and they couldn't take it. I've donated thousands and thousands of dollars of fresh pet dog food to the Griffin Pond Shelter for Animals, and presently, we still have stuff for them stored in cold storage, compliments of gross refrigeration, because they couldn't handle it all, and I bring trailer loads in for them. As far as the University of Scranton in D goes, they don't need any more money. It's a damn joke that we're getting hammered in the city with taxes, and you want to hand these people more money, yet they haven't reduced tuitions or anything else for anybody. And I brought up last week the reasons they shouldn't pay, they have to pay taxes, and the violations they've done to the rule of God. It's just ridiculous that what I see going on here, I see these lights are out. If Bill Gahan was here, he'd probably have to go into therapy right now, those little lights weren't blinking. I see Wes was in here with a Trump-suck shirt. I think it's offensive, it's people like this that have created the problem that our president got shot at twice already. I have my trailers showing where he was shot at. I eliminated the Secret Service guy that was behind him, and I put the picture of Jesus Christ there, divine intervention, and that's what saved his life, not people like this. And I saved out there where it's been. I don't like radical people in my country that turn toward communism. I don't like the fact that borders were left open by Harris, who was the czar that could have shut them down at any time without any permission from anybody. That's Lake and then the other girls that have been murdered, raped, and aren't here today, on the job she did as a prosecutor, an attorney general, and everything else. She should have been a cattle farmer, because they let the cattle out in the afternoon to run. She let the prisoners, convicts, murderers, rapists, drug dealers in our society, including everybody that came across the border. And if that shirt represents what this country's headed for, I take offense to it right here and now. Friday, the vets are going to be at the memorial park. Remember, that flag up there, the two flags, the American flag, the POW, they gave their lives for this country. How many people are going to go there and honor our fellow vets? The idiot that's the president looked at his watch when 13 coffins came off from Afghanistan because him and Harris allowed them to get killed. So if we want to honor people, show up there and honor the vets when we don't put a flag up for the 80th anniversary. Look at all the white tombstones in Normandy and everywhere else, and then you have these clowns out protesting, and then you want to give the university more money because they allow them to stand in the streets and bitch about our country? And what our people gave us, they gave us the right to be here, not these idiots. And it just turns me off. I've been to Ojima three times, recover Sergeant Ganost, who filled in the flag raising on that American flag. He's still entombed with two other Marines, and I have one more mission to go there, and I believe I located his cave, to bring him home with the honors they're entitled to, not with these idiots are doing in the streets, painting, knocking down our statues, and destroying our history for what these people gave their lives for. And it just turns your stomach when I see what's going on here. I've been in campaigns, I've been all over the place, but we have a former president get shot at twice because people like this wearing shirts, wearing things, go do this, go do that. If you don't like it, go to the polls. You're worried about birth control? It's a state issue. It's, you don't want the IRS in your house, you don't want the federal government in your bed telling your people whether you could have an abortion or not. It's a state issue. Federal government cannot jurystic over a state issue, and somebody better get it through their heads what it is. Stick up for the rights, put the people in the state. That's where your argument is. You want more government power, federal power in our country? We already have enough of the idiots that are out there. So it's time for the American people to stand up and be counted, and counted for what this election's going to mean to our country, and take out what it is. I don't want to see communism in my country, and that's where tampon Tim has taken us with Harris. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Counsel, I'd like to thank Mr. Bowles for those thoughts. You know, there's not enough crummy ads for political reasons. There's one of the worst, sick, demented invitations to join this party of drugs and abortion I've ever seen on television. That's the one with Marie and her daughter trying to glorify the aspects of abortions. You know, I was on the mistaken belief, especially for mothers of daughters, you would instill in them values and virtues, ethics, a moral code, morality, and so forth, but not, not this woman in this. She's almost wishing the worst for her daughter. It's, everybody in here has to have seen it because it's on every 15 minutes, it seems. Somebody is proud of it. I don't know what kind of future that, that woman will have and her daughter. She's fortunate that her parents weren't pro-abortionist, I suppose. These people just want to use abortion as a birth control at taxpayers' expense. It's the murder of innocents, no matter how you try to describe it and glorify it. I know someplace in your computers, there's got to be the number of men that went to jail that were convicted of a rape or an incest that resulted in illegal abortion, and I bet it's such a small number, no, nobody will release it to the public, they keep it hidden, but it's in, it's got to be written down. I think too many of you don't want to know the truth too often. Many of you don't know your friends from your enemies. Well, I'd like to know how, I've had three or four women at the, senior ladies at the Garrities when Rosie puts me on that bench out there. Nobody got vouchers for the farmer's market. How come they weren't given out this year? I mean, have to be some reason.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know they weren't given out. I knew they were available, but I didn't know.
Well, that's a disgrace. That's an absolute disgrace when money is bloat all over the place, wasted on grants to open up taco stands and so forth all over the city, and the seniors, nobody cares about the seniors in this leftist administration we got. Well, I got a minute left. I'd like to sum up the debate to me by summing up what I think the last words in the Bible sum it up. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be upon you, it's something like that. The last words of Trump at the debate, I thought they were terrific. Why didn't all these promises Harris was bragging about up there with all those facial expressions and overacting, why weren't they done the past four years? Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Shrebro?
Well, I got a minute left. I'd like to sum up the debate to me by summing up what I think the last words in the Bible sum it up. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be upon you, something like that. The last words of Trump at the debate, I thought they were terrific. Why didn't all these promises Harris was bragging about up there with all those facial expressions and overacting, why weren't they done the past four years? Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Shrebro?
Lenny Shrebro, Kaiser Valley Flood Zone. Boy, it's been a while since I've been here. You miss me? Just like a migraine, right?
I miss you, Lenny.
Okay, first, I want to publicly thank Joan, I don't know your last name, Joan, for the effort of trying to get us flood victims some tax relief from the flood last year, you know? Nothing to jump up and down about, but it was something and it's appreciated. I also want to thank the DPW, the officials, the directors, the supervisors, those guys for, at my property at the corner there, there is a 36-inch drain pipe where the stormwater is supposed to go through. Well, you know, the last time they flushed it out was a couple of years back and the debris has piled up in it and the foliage and, and speaking to those guys, you know, they came out in a short amount of time and flushed that pipe out. So I'm thanking them, you know? Now, you know, the pipes stayed fixed last summer, or late in the summer, in the immediate area there where I live, on Lafayette Street and Merrifield. They did a good job of controlling the stormwater, but now we got a new problem that's taking us back to the same thing of the flooding. All the development that's going on on the North-South Road, they had to take out like half of that mountain, I would call it, and do something with the dirt. Well, all that dirt got delivered to Hosko Scrapyard, right there off of Kaiser Avenue, and there's giant mounds of dirt. Now, when we're getting any kind of a moderate storm, the stormwater is washing that dirt right out of his property. It's filling up the storm drains on Kaiser Avenue and it's going over Kaiser Avenue. Now, here we go again, all that floodwater is coming down. Now, the way I understand it, talking to some officials there, some city people, is that they went in to look at what's going on and he didn't have the right permits in the event of some kind of problem with all that dirt, all those mounds of dirt. So they shut them down right away from taking in any more dirt. Now, that's been about three, four months ago. You know, I'm wondering like, what's going on with that? Nothing is being done with those piles of dirt, but since we had a couple of storms, now it's all mud, you know, coming down the roads and we're back to flooding problems now because it's plugging up the drains. So why can't we get something looked into there, you know, about that pile of dirt? You can actually see the mountains of dirt right from Kaiser Avenue as you just drive by Hosko Scrapyard. So, you know, so far, we didn't have a big storm like last year's storms, multiple ones, but anytime, still see the neighbors, every time they predict rain, it's anxiety galore, you know, like what might happen again? So please, you know, like, look into it, what's going on there before the next storm and the next flood. Thank you.
Mr. Waldenberg, could you alert?
I will, sir.
Code enforcement is to, you know, we're the follow-up with that mound of dirt, see where we're at.
I'll report back.
Mr. Shrebro, did you happen to go to the county and go through the process for tax relief?
Yes.
Okay. Were you successful with that?
Yes, I believe so were the neighbors. You know, we got something for that tax relief.
Yeah, I talked to many.
It's the job for whoever to get it going.
Yeah, I talked to many at the time, but I haven't, they haven't spoke to me recently
to let me know how that did. So thank you for letting me know.
Amber Viola?
Sandra.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Viola and I had some comments on the Scranton Community Health and Safety landscape analyst. So I am a social worker. I have my master's in social work. I graduated from Marywood University with a concentration in research. And I would just like to say that I was appalled in reading that whole analyst. A lot of it, the data, I didn't know where it came from. I couldn't have told you where it came from. A lot of the, a lot of the boards that they had, that they were using the graphs and the different pie charts and things were unreadable. And a lot of those, again, did not tell you where the data, where the studies, and who they talked to really came from. Marywood University has one of the largest social work programs here in the area. The next one is down, I believe, in around East Stroudsburg area, or that might even have already closed. But you have a center right here of social workers who love research, who are all needing internships, who are already graduated, who are now waiting on the internship for their masters. You guys aren't utilizing the resources that we already have in the city of Scranton and you could have paid local people to do 100% better job than that 115-page of mess that they came and did not answer any questions. One of my biggest concerns is the key findings of the reports with the housing, social support systems, quality of education, health risks, income equality, lack of assets, all of those things, what does that equal? At the end of it, they're giving more money to the police department. These things aren't things that policing can help. And if we start overpolicing the Scranton residents more, black residents and brown residents will be overpoliced more, just like they are now. And where in there did it say the offers to help? There's so many community groups, there's a continuum of care that we have here, there's a lot of things in place that are already being done. Why didn't they reach out to those groups and those organizations and the people that run those organizations and talk to them and speak to them? Why didn't they reach out to the NAACP here, chapter that we have, to sit down and talk to people about the different things? Again, my biggest takeaway from that is the amount of money that our police department is going to get because of this report and that amount of money is going to go to policing black and brown children here in this area. And I just hope that we get some answers. I also hope that we could try to keep things a little bit more local. There's organizations and there's people who are more than equipped, who would have cost way less money and you guys could have got an actual report that would have answered a lot of your questions that you had while you were sitting up there. The second thing I would like to say is, it is voter registration day. We are having a voter registration drive at the Pocket Park on the corner of Linden and Wyoming on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It is sponsored by the NAACP. We'll have free food. It's from 1:00 to 4:00. I also wanted to ask a question about the vouchers for the farmers market because I have been contacting people for the last two years about getting them for disabled veterans. I've been getting the runaround, I've probably talked to about seven different people about that specifically. There are a lot of disabled vets. We have a very high veteran population here. It's the second highest in the nation. I am one of them. We are suffering. When everybody else is suffering through the economy and housing crises and different things, food shortages, we're suffering even more. A lot of us are disabled and we pay our rent out of our disability. Veterans still have to pay for daycare. We still have to pay for housing. We still have to pay for car insurance, car payment, all of those things. So when my landlord raised my rent by $300, that money is coming directly out of my veterans' benefits. So myself and a lot of people were trying to try to offset that. That's why I contacted the county and a bunch of different people for the vouchers for veterans to be able to use the, what is it? The farmers market, there you go. I'm sorry, my mind blanked. The farmers market. And that is all I have to say. Thank you. I yield.
So what did they say then?
Honestly, I wasn't ever getting a response. They would tell me to contact somebody else and then to contact somebody else and to contact somebody else. And I, and by the time I would go through that whole process, it's the end of the season. And this is the second year I've been, been trying to get it for, for veterans in this area.
I know the past two years, they actually handed them out at the market.
Yes. But it wasn't for disabled veterans.
I understand, yeah. But I believe that at least occurred.
Yes, it did. They did give them out.
Someone was concerned about not having it at all this year. I know.
They did give them out by hand and I'm not sure, Ms. Norma, did they mail them before?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Not everybody can make it there, so that's a.
Yeah.
Ms. Viola, did you get a copy of this report, like a paper copy?
No, I did not get a paper copy. I have it online.
Okay, there's, there's an appendix in the back that does say some of the individuals and the agencies that were contacted. If you want this copy, you could have it.
Okay, sure.
Because a lot of them are in that continuum of care. I am also a mental health professional and felt the same way about the study.
And I would just like to add, I mean, we have a lot of resources here and I know a lot of other areas are having social workers work with the police department. And I have a lot of contacts at Marywood and the social work department and all of us have talked about this subject repeatedly because this was what my dissertation was on. And we are more than willing to step in and help if they're looking for social workers who can come in and help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
Another thing I just wanted to say about the study is, although it was counsel approved, it did come from the administration?
Yes.
Okay.
We know, we know. Hello. Kristin Xanthas. I believe I spoke to Mr. Waldenberg many times about the new building on Dixon Avenue when it was being put up. You know, the, when it was being put up just before, you know, they hit ground for it, you know, everybody came down there for their pictures and stuff. And I expected that. Well, the building's up. Building's been up for a little while now, not too long. Well, about a month after the building's up, everything's falling apart. I mean, myself personally, you know, I don't live there, but I feel bad for the people that live there. The manager was fired, so there's no, there's no manager over there. There's no help. It used to be that the garbage was picked up super early, which was out of control, like 4:00 in the morning, when it's right near my house. Now you get periods of time where the garbage isn't picked up at all. There is some trouble with, I can't say it here in front of everybody because I'm speaking on camera, there's some trouble with some people that are living there. I can't, I would never say a name, but I had somebody, I was home, I had somebody come look at a wall in my driveway and we're looking at the wall, they have it repaired slightly, and I hear a noise behind me in my yard and there's just, you know, a woman from the building trying to dig holes in my yard with the metal detector. So, I mean, you know, I think maybe, you know, somebody should come down there and check on things on that building since that building was supposed to be like, since it's called Scranton Square. I mean, I think somebody should get some help down there. I asked many times about a light down there, which I, you know, you can't get people to answer their door to go for a petition. So, nobody, you know, usually everybody's just stays in their house and nobody answers their door and half the time, I understand people are at work during the day. But, I mean, then you got the thing about safety down there. I mean, yesterday, actually, there was a cop down that way for about an hour, but other than that, there's nothing. So I think either maybe somebody, if, you know, I mean, I'm not going to call city council again because I bothered them enough, but I mean, somebody needs to get down there. Because I called the place in charge of that place, the main place, my mother did. They said they were going to have somebody speak to the residents because they can't be like coming onto properties and digging holes in ground, which I don't know why she was digging up holes to look in the dirt with a metal detector. But, thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Well, we've had a nice conversation today. It's been kind of mixed up here, but the first thing I have is Pennsylvania American Water. Having them come here and have a half-hearted conversation with them really offers no benefit to the residents because what really has to happen to Pennsylvania American Water is the city has to regain control of the water system and the sewer system. If you remember, two or three weeks ago, I came in here with a plastic jar full of water. It was oranged, for the best way to describe it. And this is the sludge that residents are drinking. And then, when you see what the city of Scranton did to the sewer authority and you combine that with the water bill, you're driving Scrantonians into poverty. And I don't know why the Scrantonians just can't use the process of condemnation and take the water system and the sewer system back. Because the money that the Scranton Sewer Authority sold, the city sold the Sewer Authority for, it wasn't any benefit to the residents. It really diminished their quality of life and their standard of living. And we need to find some real solutions to our long-range problems. And, you know, there's a lot of politics here, as Bob Bolis talked about the shirt that Wes had on, I believe it's freedom of speech and, but I really think the Democrats have really caused a lot of problems in our country, calling Trump a threat and that somebody has to deal with him or kill him. And it's been going on for quite a few years now. But you know, what goes around comes around. And you see, we had a police officer standing here, so, I mean, if somebody went out of their mind and decided they were going to come in here with a handgun and shoot everybody in here, that police officer wouldn't even slow them down. Is that the kind of rhetoric that we want to bring into politics? Does it really belong there? The Democrats have done that. Maxine Waters said, hunt the Republicans down wherever you find them. So as we move down this road to the Third World where we're heading, you know, we sit here, we, we watch these meetings, everybody's talking about the government, the government giving me money, the government doing a study. You know, Malcolm X said that the most dangerous thing to the black man is a white liberal. Okay? And when you take a look at abortion, abortion was brought forward by a white female liberal and the people being killed in general were black children. And when you look at the CDC statistics, one quarter of American women have an abortion. And when you take all the statistics that we're teaching sex in school, I think we need to take a look because I don't know why we'd ever teach young girls about sex. Not that boys should learn anything either, but even the studies like Anna Mack and all this, sociologists say that it's just terrible. And you know, when you look at statistics for crime, rape, murder, you know, children with no father, boys and girls, girls need their father more than the son does. And the damage done to those children is off the scales and all the psychologists aren't going to make it right. But you know what we've done? We've allowed politics to enter into every drop of our lives and it's really destroyed every inch of us, just like Facebook, market, you know, not Marketplace, but Facebook and all the platforms, just spewing hatred and garbage. Okay? And then when you look at how society's collapsing, and it is collapsing, okay, they're hunting police down in the streets and they're killing them, okay? Don't forget that Kamala Harris was bailing people out of jail that were burning cities down. Okay? I mean, this is, this is her claim to fame. And when you listen to what Joe Brown says, who was a judge in California, she got everywhere by sleeping with men. She had no ability at all of her own. She has no case law to support her practice in law or anything. And there's people that are going to go out there and vote for her. But yet, the people that made the earring she wore at the debate where Trump said they're hers and there's microphones in them. And when you listen to her speak, just like the black journalist who interviewed her today, she can't speak on her own. And people are talking about electing her. It's a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for the sentence. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Hi, I'm Rick Little, currently hanging around Scranton. I like to talk about media and. and schooling. I got this brain worm song in my head. I want to talk about this book here. I think everybody should read it. I think it's really relevant to Scranton. Oh, God. This song is, they're eating your dogs. They're eating the cats. They're eating the pets of the people that live there. That's the song. I gotta get that out of my mind. Anyway, this book, Unmasked, came out in 2021. It's by Andy Ngo. And he talks about Rose City Antifa. And I think it's sort of relevant, because I remember when Antifa was, and BLM were invited to the city, and then I'm, I'm seeing, you know, they sprayed it, painted "All Cops Are Bastards," their, their thing, ACAB, right on the Pulaski statue, and then I see this county guy cleaning it up. And I'm wondering, I was wondering at the time, why does nobody do anything, because the camera's aiming right at it, you know, they know who did it. They were invited in by the mayor, who was from Portland. But, but let me talk about, about Rose City Antifa. That's the first Antifa in America. Now, now, Antifa goes back a real long time, and there's a lot of confusion about it. Same confusion that everybody has about communism, socialism, fascism, democracy. People don't know, mainly because of the schools and the media. They, they don't let, let people know. But Antifa was first started in Europe by the, in Germany. They were the brown shirts, Rom, who was an ally of Hitler. It was the, he was gay. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but, you know, they were going around murdering people. And then there were the, the black shirts in Italy. This, this was the first anti-fascist thing. And it went into the Frankfurt School, and it came in Germany, came to America, and it's eroding on our democracy because they're using violence. And they're using racism. That's the whole BLM thing. And the one thing I, I remember when I first heard about BLM, I was very confused, because to me, BLM was the Bureau of Land Management. People forget about Hillary Clinton selling 20% of our uranium to, you know, through a shell company in Canada, selling it to Russia. We got communists, communism all around us here, and one of the biggest problems in Pennsylvania is, is the way they, they've shaped the courts and shaped law enforcement, and especially through the Attorney General, when, when Josh Shapiro was Attorney General and certified the elections for Pennsylvania, and now he's governor. But all through this time, Antifa was funded by, by George Soros. I have pictures of advertisements, "Come be a peaceful protester." And we all remember them burning down the cities, burning down Portland, burning down Seattle. But we, we have to start looking at, at the government here. What bothers me a lot is democracy. I remember this week reading a quote from, alleged quote from Bill Gowen, "I don't care how many signatures are gathered. We are, we are not removing the Biden signs." What kind of democracy is that? I mean, I've tried everything I can. All they tell me is, you need to get a lawyer. But there needs to be changes here. And I hope everybody reads this book. I hope you zoomed in on it. So people, it's recommended by Tucker Carlson.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Virgil Argenta. Is it fair to say we have a DPW in the Park and Recreation Department? Yes? Then why would an elected official, city councilman, be doing work at city parks? You understand that he's taking work away from our union members, and it isn't fair to them. I come from a pro-union family. A grievance should be filed against Mr. Smurl immediately. It's bad enough he has keys to the park property. The federal and state government has a key sign-out system, and that works. It works for them. Why not implement a key sign-out system in the city of Scranton? We remember April 2023, when the keys to City Hall were lost. Remember the damage that was done to City Hall? Do we remember the Lackawanna County prison? Remember the key scandal there? Do we remember the power washing issue, because somebody had keys and was using city equipment? Did we forget about that? If Mr. Smurl is volunteering at the parks, Connor Park and Naug Park, which is fine, as long as it's approved by our union officials. And if it is approved, will Mr. Smurl carry insurance in the event of an injury or damage to any of the vehicles while he's cutting grass, and the rocks and dirt are going all over the vehicles, as it was Sunday at Naug Park? And does he check with anybody from the Park and Recreation Department to see if the grass that he's cutting, or the weeds, so-called weeds, are there for a reason? Are they a buffer zone to anything? Are your volunteers vetted, and are background checks done, as they work in city parks where children are? And if they are vetted, and you have background checks, can you produce them? Mr. Smurl, without snidely comments, and a little bit of respect, because all I am is a concerned citizen asking questions, will you be willing to sign out your park key when you use it and when you bring it back? Have a good night, counsel.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Coymanuka. I understand this podium is often place of criticism, sometimes hopeful constructive criticism. It's true that people do come here to complain. This is a place to address our grievances. That's how it's supposed to work. When people reach out to 311 and get blown off, call and ask, and are told for years, they're on a list, soon, just wait. It breeds a negative reaction at this, at this podium. Some praise and cheer, others will be vocal in address that the emperor has no clothes. Sometimes, as simple as a disingenuous comment on how things are getting better, and reaching back to Frech and Keen murders 51 years ago, to validate five deaths in the first five months of this year, that they are no different, as if nothing is new or unusual. Well, it's not equivalent. Sometimes the anger is from the unsheltered person who is not being helped by a task force, who must get a certification to prove that he's homeless. Don't worry, sit under a bridge, hopefully elsewhere. We are working on, we're working on, working on something in the future. Even Mr. Little's words, if you listen closely, there is some validity. He asked, is Scranton a sanctuary city? It's not. But I believe some of the question goes back to Sister Adrienne Barrett and the Little Sisters of the Poor, importing people from Mexico and South America to this region. Why would they do such a thing? The Catholic Church was floundering. It watched more vacant masses and no new blood. It was outdated and becoming cash poor. The solution was to import highly religious people who would work, but more importantly, they tithe, and they tithe well. Money was the base for the floundering church to the city who offered a de facto church sanctuary. I think it has a lot to do with nonprofits with a vested financial interest in having, operating a sanctuary importer for self-gain in the city. Happy thoughts. You've done remarkable things. This is the first year in a long while you've succeeded in resolving the issue of Scranton's lack of lifeguards. And the pool at Naug Park is due to be open on September 20, of 2025. Never have I seen a September opening of an outdoor pool, so that should be a new one. Last session on the LSA grant for the U of S, this new workforce center. I understand we like pass-through grants for anything, because Scranton, as a middleman, gets a 5% cut off the top. The LSA grant is not from the Scranton budget, but it's off gambling fees tagged for public grant use. We're the gatekeepers of that. First, let's address the new workforce building. It's only a small part of that building. The University of Scranton is at a small business development center established in 1980. What has it done for 44 years? Can you tell us? It's only a small amount, if you look at the university, that the university received for the same building, 16.62 million from Cartwright's 2023 community project funding request. Bringing our fair share of federal tax powers back to our region is the main region he ran for Congress. So the U of S gets the equivalent of 25% of Scranton's entire rescue plan in 2023 alone, and yet is still feeding at the trough. And I believe there was no pilot this year. Have you looked at the 65 pages of approved requests and grants across the states for LSA? Most are for sidewalks, equipment, waste facilities, bridges, paving, sewers, EMS, parks and, parks, animal shelter. Chestnut Hill Township just got $130,000 for assault shed rehabilitation. We can only apply for nonprofits as a pass-through for the most part. As a pass-through, you know you can say no. Last, we have a splash patent, it seems, no long-term insurances in the contract for repairs. Shocking. We have addressed this as a, have we addressed this as a vendor providing substandard work, and have we removed them from the vendors list? For the bridge project and the walkway, there was an LSA under the Penn Avenue Corridor Project Grant for $472,317. So who was the designer and architect who made an entire plan, started conduction, construction, without properly assuring ground stability? Have they been removed from the approved vendors list? I understand right now, we're in it for a penny for a pound, but we shouldn't be there a second time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. I've returned to Scranton about seven years ago, a little over seven years now. And I've been coming to City Council at least six of those seven years to, because I wanted to learn more about Scranton. I wanted to learn more about how it had changed from when I left, and when I got married and left Scranton, and when I returned. So I came to City Council in different meetings so that I could find out about my city. One of the things that I've learned over that time is that we do have a free speech. We do have the opportunity to make a difference. We have an opportunity by volunteering and helping with the city. The city of Scranton is not perfect. I'm not sure there's a city throughout the United States that's perfect, but there is room for change. And in order to do that change, we as volunteers need to get out there and make a difference. Does everything that we do result in being changed? No. But we also have to try to make a change. As I sat here tonight and listened to the different renditions of who, who has free speech and who doesn't, we all have that free speech as we're citizens of the United States. But we do not have that right to insult or embarrass anyone. So, for the things that I've heard tonight, I kept thinking, what happened to City Council? What happened to the things that we used to just come and discuss those things that were of importance to making Scranton a better city? So I looked at the rules of, of our council. They've changed. I don't know when they changed, but they've changed. So I don't know what brought about this change that gives everyone a right to come to this podium and speak about anything that's on their heart. It used to be that you spoke about something that was a benefit for all of us in Scranton. One of the things that it says you're not to address a particular city council members, that's right here. And yet we sit here and we let them do that. That's not right. We're to follow, either if these are the latest rules, then we should follow these rules. If they've changed, then we should have a revision date on them as to when they change, because they're not the same rules that I've read over the last six years. So I don't know what prompted this change to these rules for City Council, but I think that we, as those that come to this podium, deserve an explanation of exactly what is supposed to be discussed at this podium. And not so many different of my ideas and of what I think and how I want, and to berate anyone else that may be speaking something that is different than what their thoughts are. I've been volunteering, you can see my shirt, I've been volunteering my own time, not with any organization, to get people to register to vote, because that's the only way we can make a difference, is to vote. First of all, you have to be registered. If you've moved and you've, don't have the same address as you've had before, you do need to put an application in. And the office is down at Lackawanna, Wyoming Avenue. I always want to call it the Globe Store, but it's the Lackawanna County Building, and you could just either pick up your application there or take the applications back. But that's the only way we can make a difference, not berating anyone and, and talking about because they're wearing a particular shirt or what their particular convictions are. So, get out and vote, go register, and that's how you can make a difference. Okay? That's all.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Okay, I still have jotted down here on recycling. I don't know what you plan to do with Mr. De Naples, but he's claiming that the recycling comes in too mixed with cans and bottles, and instead of paying $100 a ton to dispose it, we wind up getting about $200 a ton. So I would suggest that either we decide whether we want to get glass bottles out of the equation, or go with double barrels and have a week for cans and a week for bottles and glass, simply put. And oh, some good news. De Naples abandoned the idea of dumping his garbage tea water over the, into the tributary that runs right through Naug Park. So, that was a wonderful thing that I heard. We don't need it. Pay for it. Get removed. Now, we are at 40% tax exempts, and if anybody's interested in an exclusive Scranton Taxpayers Association, talk to me sometime, and maybe we could get something set up. And we stick to our knitting. It's no, oh, why do we have to have separation of church and state? And, you know, it's like, because people go to jail and you have to pay for them, and otherwise, they pay no taxes anyway, because they're washed out by the time they get out. That's why. Okay, now, a lot of nasty things we're saying about some of the loveliest people I know, women. And in Georgia, before I came here, two women have died waiting for hours over a failed pregnancy. 20 hours the one woman waited, and she died on 20 hours the one woman waited and she died on the operating table because the doctors were afraid that it was going to be by some zealous DA declared a convenience abortion. Another woman, she waited hours because she had a healthy birth, but she was unable to expel the afterbirth. So it just festered there for hours. And oh, by the way, if that was your wife, or you were the person involved, the woman involved, who's responsible for your hospital bills? When you go to the hospital? Now, if you have insurance, fine. If you don't have enough, ain't that too bad? That's just too bad. You, you wind up, some states allow them to report your, to the credit bureau and everything else, you know? It's just insane. And furthermore, the 2025 project names to eliminate birth control availability, eliminate it. They don't want to give you a choice. They just want to push you into a corner. Now, the average middle class, if you have two kids in school, in Scranton, that's $30,000 a year. So how much is the middle class the salt of the earth? How much? If you're, every year, that's $360,000 or something like that for two kids, year in and year out. I mean, you know, things really get construed here. And by the way, everybody that took a pot shot at poor Donald so far was a former Republican voter. Beat each other up. Don't blame me. Beat each other up. Get a ring and go have a fight there up behind Naug Park. I mean, people shoot each other up there, so why not? You know? This is ridiculous. You blame other people for all the problems and you're too busy creating them. Oh, we rolled back the railroad regulations and the train wrecks and ruins the whole town. Well, you know, Joe was in office, so how convenient. Joe, Joe was in office. That happened under him. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'm going to start with a little story. About 10 years ago, I was honored to manage a campaign for the late Chris Arno. He ran for Register of Wills. He didn't really have too much help because Mulligan was on the same slate against our former corrupt mayor. So Chris and I went to 151 events and really got to know a good friend once again. The night of the election, we had the party at Samario's on Market Street. After the results came in, we walked outside, shared a moment together. And in that moment, I saw he was a little teared up. I said, Chris, what's wrong? You did everything the right way and I'm very proud of you. He said, no, we're not done yet. Took his cane and he pointed across the street. Over at Sternus was Fran Kowalski's party. That was Chris's opponent. Also there was Linda Monley. And so we're going across the street. We're going to congratulate her in person. So we managed to go across the street, go to open the door, and he said, oh, we'll be in and out in a matter of five minutes. Made her way up the steps. She had a lot of people there and rightfully so. She's a good woman. So as we walked in, he started to get everybody's attention. I raised a hand and I said, ladies and gentlemen, let me have a moment of your time. Chris Arno is here to congratulate Fran and thank Linda for her years of service. And immediately grabbed a astounding response. Everybody started clapping, shaking his hand. We went over and congratulated and said, thank you. And 35 minutes later, we walked out the door and he said, wow, that was a lot longer than I expected. First of all, you don't see that anymore. Secondly, I said to him, I said, I really admire the fact that you put yourself out there like that. Well, he said to me, with his arm around me, and he said, Mike, you'll know when the time is right. Well, current climate of our city, situation that we're in, and it's not all doom and gloom. There's many of us here that stand before council that show up week after week bringing things to the city that we feel needed response. This isn't a one-person show. This is a big city, 27.7 square miles, many intersections, many kids going to our local schools. And, you know, we're trying to do our part. We're trying to help out. We don't want to see doom and gloom. All right? We want what's best for the city. Unfortunately, a few of us operate on a different level. You know, we get answers to questions and it's how you go about doing it. You know, when you care, you stand before a body like this, no sheets of paper, and you just talk from your heart. I heard a lot of that tonight. Many of us bring things before this council because we care and we want to make a difference. I feel strongly though that our current situation in this administration isn't helpful to us. When you have a mayor that shows up at 10:30, leaves at the last photo op, part-time page isn't the answer for us. You know, we could do better. We were experiencing a lot of calls. There was one the other evening at the football game. You know, families can't even enjoy a game without an incident anymore. And, you know, all of us care about the police department. We truly do. They're, they're for us every time that we need them. And we want to do our part. You know, we opened up a crime watch in West Scranton because we care. Now, I think the rest of the city needs the same. So take down my number, 570-980-0113, or you could reach me on Facebook. I want to do my part and try and help out the best I can. If you want to start a crime watch, get in touch with me. There are several of us that we'd be more than happy to meet and help get you set up because together I think we can make a difference. And I think this body has a heavy lift. Their railway system is coming in four years and together we need to do our part. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
The DPW contract negotiations, Frank, can you reach out, find out when they're scheduled to begin? I think that contract is up in December of this year. So just wondering about that. Also, the individual that was in here concerning Dixon Avenue, I know Mr. Schuster and I were talking. Is there any way we could put a request in to have them go down and evaluate whether we can get street light down on that street? It sounds like it's, they've been looking for one for a while. There's a new building down there. It seems like they would benefit from one, but if we could look into that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
I'll follow up, Mr. King.
Appreciate that. I already spoke about North Washington Avenue with the Pennsylvania American Water. If you could look into that for us. I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, actually to follow Mr. King there, I wish Kristen stuck around because we could have got her one of those petitions to, to request that street light, although she said she had some difficulty with some signatures. It could have been something we, we could have done on the spot for her. I have several different things to talk about tonight, if everybody could follow with me because it's a broad range. Since we discussed bringing Muffle Hunt in to do this report, I've criticized the company. There was a lot of criticism coming out of that company to start. I felt after reading their first report, well, the city was actually volunteered to be part of their first study. Federal money was used to do that study. And after reading that first report and what came out of that first report, I felt it was a waste of city funds to conduct this second one. Their collection methods and their findings are subjective. It's my opinion that a lot of assumptions are made, which is a common criticism of their type of study, especially when it comes to using it to form policy and drive decisions. I'm going to be watching how this study drives some of those policy decisions and I'll have some reservations with that. I wasn't sure how their indicators were used. There was a lack of empirical validation of their indicators, which is, which causes bias, speculation, and flawed assumptions, which was one of the fears of mine. So I'm sure I'll bring this up in the, in the future. I reached out to Eileen Cipriani about an audit update and it looked like we got a response that the 2023 audit is waiting for the completion, the receipt of the Scranton Parking Authority, which they've been informed will be completed in October and we're being told that that's the last piece of, of the 2023 audit. I also requested of her about demolitions in the city and if there were funds still available for city demolitions. And she stated that they do have a redevelopment and blight coordinator on staff and that they're going to have to circle back with me on whether there's still funding left over for those demolitions. Some other questions I had last week, when it comes to a pilot, it does look like the University of Scranton donated $150,000 in pilots this year. It was on January 3rd of 2024. I know that we got some of those numbers towards the end of last year, so I don't know if we were told. Can, can we just find out that there was a 2023 pilot from the University of Scranton and also this January of 2024 pilot?
I will, sir.
Thank you. I'm not sure if we were told in December that there would be one in January, so just making sure there was one for each year. I asked about the homeless task force. I asked, you know, since the Supreme Court ruling came down and that other municipalities might be taking action, have we seen an influx in the, the vagrant population in the city of Scranton? I was just given an answer of no, but my question from the week prior had several different, there were several different questions and I'm not sure what no, what the answer no was referring to. But one of the questions I did ask was who leads that committee? And we got the answer that Mayor Page Cognetti leads the meetings. There was a question about the inactive city accounts and whether we were charged for having those accounts open and the city has not been charged for inactive city accounts of those ones that were closed for however long they were open. I asked some questions about the electric vehicles. I asked if we leased 10 vehicles in 2024 or 2023. We leased an additional two in 2024. I asked if they were the same make and model because within a month or two of us getting that lease, they were discon, that make and model was discontinued. So I was told that the make and models were Chevy Equinoxes and not the, the make and model of the original lease. The two vehicles leased were Equinoxes. The new vehicle for 2025 will be leased through the same program. The make and model will be determined in 2025, but they said, please note that the Chevy Volt may come back into production. So although it was discontinued at that time, it may be back into production. I had several questions about recycling. I asked for the, the average tonnage from years past for October, November, December. It seems to be about 100 ton per month. I asked if the, if the BA's office did a cost analysis to determine whether we should continue with our recycling program and how much they, they estimated that it was costing us. So based on the city administration's preliminary analysis, the increase cost at $120 a ton in recycling is going to cost us $100,000 annually more. From looking at some of these numbers, it looks like it may be even more than that, but that was the number that was, that we were given at this point in time. When looking at whether the program is, we should continue with the program based on the new costs, they said that they're reviewing the recycling program. In 2020, there was several other responses to RFPs that were given that were above that $120 per ton. I asked how the city is currently verifying whether our recycling is clean and not contaminated and within the recycling company's guidelines. The answer that we received was administration was requesting a meeting with the representations of the recycling center to discuss those guidelines and any concerns that they may have. Also, a question that was asked was how many tons were not taken as recycling and charged that new $120 rate? And the answer was since the new rate started in August, the city was invoiced at 88.26 tons at the rate of $120 per ton. Next, we got an update on 614 North Sumner Avenue. Two vehicles were also removed from that property and code enforcement will advise on the trimming of that property in DPW. So thanks to Mr. Boldenberg for that update on that property. I discussed 902 West Elm earlier in the meeting about that steel plate over the basin. There were two other properties that I had. I, I've been emailing these for quite some time. One was 1623 Jackson Street. We've been getting complaints since 2022 and I know we definitely put some in, in 2023. It, it doesn't seem that there's any improvement there. And then 925, 927 Oxford. What I'm getting from the neighbors is there's a lot of construction going on, new roofs, materials on pallets out the front, and it seems like there's no permits at that property.
I'll get a status on both, sir.
Thank you very much. That should be all, Mr. Smell.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Arthur, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. First, one of the responses that I received, I had asked about the cost of purple paper eaters to be picking up our recycling from, or shredding recycling from City Hall. And I was told that paper shredders are $260 per month. So that is not, not a bad price for us to be able to securely dispose of shredded material from the city. And that's a little bit over $3,000 per year. So I think the city can, can handle that and I'm, I'm glad that we have those in place. And some of the properties I asked about last week, I still haven't gotten responses on, but for the rear of 621 Alder Street that neighbors in South Side keep asking about, there's still an active warrant for the property owner of that and, and there's been no response from them. So that, you know, hopefully with the committee that's going to be formed, properties like that will be taken care of, but that's, that's the status of it as of now and what we've received from the magistrate. And I'd asked about 801, 803 Madison Avenue. That's a property that had a fire some time ago and wanted to see the status of that. And there was a condemnation release request just placed a few weeks ago by the, the property owner. So it looks like they want to rehabilitate the property and, and rent it out again in the future. And lastly, I just wanted to bring up the Muffle Hunt report. I appreciated having them in tonight to explain the, the results, but wasn't really impressed by the, by the presentation and what we were provided with. I was hopeful that, that would provide the city with a sense of, of direction and, and better detail in, in what we could do as a city to prevent, to prevent crime and violence. And I think that, I'm, I know we still have a lot of work to do. I want to know from the administration, I want to have discussions with them as to what next steps are going to be now that we have this report, what we're going to, what we're going to take away from it, any actions that the city is going to take on the basis of the report. I also want to know if the SPD is going to be performing those, the ongoing data analysis that, that we spoke of tonight and on how frequent of a basis that's going to, that's going to be. Certainly that's something that's going to be helpful for them, then, then I want to make sure that they're going to be doing that and that they have the capacity to do it. And that's, those are my thoughts on that for now, but that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arthur. Mr. McCann, do we have any motions or comments?
I got a few, so I'm definitely going to start with Muffle Hunt. I wasn't happy with the report we never knew about a couple of years ago that was presented to us that identified veterans as extremists and domestic terrorists. Are you kidding me? So of course I did not vote for the second one. The first one, the same people were used for data collection. Guess who?
The administration.
Second one, data collection, administration, didn't talk to the school district, but said they're failures. Didn't talk to, the, the whole city said they were failures for the most part. Very vague as last time. They were smart enough this time not to identify different sectors in the city as extreme ra, uh, uh... They were smart enough this time not to identify different sectors in the city as extreme terrorist or domestic terrorists or extremists. I, I noticed that, that I noticed. But, and what jumped out at me is too, when we came here tonight, we were told we're getting a PowerPoint. We got a one-page PowerPoint. We got a one-page PowerPoint. All right? Wasn't happy with that. If you're going to defend yourself and, and say that you've did all this data collection because they were under contract when five homicides occurred in the city, they were under contract in collecting data when Lieutenant, Lieutenant Gil Martin got shot in the head. Now to peep from them until now. And what did they bring us? Well, I think we need to do more data collection. They're trying to get another contract. I asked. So I wasn't happy with them. I wasn't with the first report. I wasn't happy with this report. I know some data collection I believe the chief is happy with and that's fine, but guess what? Muffle Hun should be done. I don't want to see them come around again for another contract. All right, so moving on. So our friend Derek Rains has been coming here, the poor disabled gentleman who come, has been coming here for as long as I'm here. The poor guy can't get out of his driveway to go to therapy. He has a, you know, because of the, the conditions of the road and the layers of blacktop. He was happy to report to me today or yesterday. He said, Mark, you know what? They're finally here digging it up. Multiple layers are finally doing the work. And of course he couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to relay to DPW that he's, how happy he is and, and he wants to compliment them and, and again, say, you know, very happy for the work they're doing. And I'm glad to hear that because he's waited multiple years for, for this to happen. So I'm glad to hear it too. All right, also, this is, this is an issue that comes up all the time. It's the corner of Railroad and Luzerne Street. There's a vacant service station that used to be there, gas station, whatever you want to call it. There's issues there where people park there. There's issues with, you know, blight and overgrown. But in addition to that, as you go past that up Luzerne on the right, of course, you know that's the bridge everybody gets stuck under, but this resident is complaining again that there's, you know, it's in rough shape again. There, there's litter, there's sleeping bags. And I know every once in a while someone will clean it up, but, and it's usually a resident, which is nice, but we need to find out for sure, once and for all, if you could please elate, alert the railroad department and of course, you know, our, our city code enforcement. Cause I know DPW will clean it up because they're great guys, but we need to know who's actually responsible for that because when we don't know, it's not consistently taken care of. So could you please look into that?
I will, sir.
All right. What else do I have here? So also, I agree with the two speakers tonight. We have a POW flag right behind me and why that's not hung when it should be is beyond me. And my understanding, because people come here all the time and say, hey, can we, can we fly this flag? And, and they speak to us and I, I want the public to know that hanging a flag out in front of this building is at the total discretion of the mayor. We have no power over that. But, you know, Friday's a big day for POWs. I, I think it's reasonable if, you know, we asked the mayor if, if she would kindly hang that flag. And she doesn't have to go out and get one, there's one right here. If you could please do that, send that correspondence over to the mayor.
We will, Mr. McCann.
Thank, thank you. I, I don't know if everybody's in agreement. I, I should have asked everybody up here, but if you're in agreement, if not, I still wanted to ask if, if, that's fine. Also, on three, 3100 Grimes Avenue, I'm being told that there are branches that are growing out over Davis Street obstructing the view. Safety, safety issues, so I think we need to take care of that. Okay? I also posed recycling questions last week and my answer was refer to Mr. Schuster's question, but mine were a little different. Or the answer I got was they're in conversation or will be in conversation with our, our vendor. So I also agree that, you know, okay, initially recycling is supposed to produce revenue. Initially recycling is supposed to, you know, put less in the landfill, but, but we're, we're not receiving any revenue. We're paying to have our recyclables recycled. And I know a couple of years ago, the co-mingled recycling for most of this area in our country went to China. They took care of that stuff for us. Guess what? They don't want to do it anymore. We knew that. I know that they put it out to bid, try to find someone else that would do it and, and I guess, you know, it, it had a cost more than our current vendor, but we have to think outside the box. I, I don't believe, because I know, I did a little research, not a lot, but I know that, you know, plastic bottles, 10% of them are, are maybe 10% are made into new plastic bottles with some virgin fill, they call it, or virgin plastic. But cans are, could be recycled into cans for an eternity. So maybe, okay, since we have to pay so much for this separating and the co-mingling, you know, maybe we just have another pickup. You know, I, I remember not picking up cardboard, that was recent. And I'm hearing, we, we should definitely get money for that, but we're not. We're paying for cardboard, which is absurd because it's separated, it's not dirty, it's not mixed with cans or bottles. So maybe, you know, we should look into it. What would it, you know, was there any cost benefit to separate it ourselves? You know, have one can for glass or bottles, one can for aluminum, you know, maybe stagger it like we do with the cardboard a different week or every two weeks or every three weeks. But at least is, if that could be, you know, in the conversation as something maybe we can do to reduce the cost. Cause we're not hearing that. All we're hearing is when we got to pay more, we, we'll talk to them. We, we look for other vendors, but maybe we need to do it because we're paying, we have to pay for recyclables when they land there, but we have to pay people to pick them up, our people to pick them up. It's almost like it's not worth it. And of course, you know, we care about the environment. Of course there was an act, a recycling act, I don't know, I forget it. Last week I knew, I think it was 2000, 1988, whatever. But we're, we're being charged more. It, it like, and I'm not saying not recycle and to put it in the garbage, but it'd be cheaper for us. It shouldn't be if we're going to recycle and do the right thing. So I think we need to think out of the box. I think administration needs to maybe reach out to other municipalities, see what they're doing. Maybe, maybe they figured it out and we haven't yet. But just to pay it and pay every increase and, and, and accept it, I mean, that, we're not budgeted for that, that increase. I don't think so. I doubt we are, but I think we need to have a, a continued discussion with recycling and what we're going to do. I know administration says they're going to be talking, but we need to be included in that conversation. All right?
I'll include those questions.
So the public will be aware. And thankfully, that's all I have.
The schools, crossing guards? Are you going to mention?
All right. So, you know, I brought forth an issue with the crossing guards and, and about, you know, they're grossly underpaid. Their, their first line of defense every morning with the kids, they put up with parents, students, people driving by, they put, they put up with the elements. And, you know, they came to, reached out to me and wanted, you know, some type of increase. They make $20 a day, folks. So we've been talking about it and, and our solicitor has been in conversation with the administration at the Scranton School District because we share the cost. And I know that we're finally getting there, we're getting somewhere and hopefully soon we'll, we'll have an agreement and, and how it's going to be introduced because it wasn't clear how it was done in the past. There's no record over here in the city, but it should be something. If we don't have the legislation, we create it or pass regi, legislation. I guess the city used to, the district used to have some type of MOU, but both, both entities are working on that, just so the people out there who, who, you know, reached out to me be aware that we're still working on this and it's, it's probably going to happen or should happen. And that's all I think.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. 5B.
5B for introduction to resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the South Scranton Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $84,000 to be used towards the handicapped accessible restrooms project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know this is something that the South Scranton Little League has been wanting to do for quite a while. That's previously been, been brought forward and I think in the past there weren't any grants at that, at that point that were going to be applicable to them, but I'm glad to see now that, that there is and that they're, have their application in and I'm happy to approve this and hopefully that they're successful and able to install those handicapped restrooms.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Divine Mercy Parish to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $122,651 to be used towards the St. Joseph Cemetery Restoration Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Woodhaven Recovery to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $96,600 to be used towards the Mulberry House Project.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of street cats and dogs to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $31,500 to be used towards the Naog Zoo Building Chimney and Masonry Restoration Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5F for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Scranton Cultural Center to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $79,275 to be used towards the flooring restoration project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I, I love that we have this building in Scranton. It's so historic. I love going into it. It's beautiful and, you know, I'm happy to approve anything that's going to help them to continue its beauty and to be able to restore the flooring. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5G for introduction, resolution. Accepting a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the special city services account number as noted.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to say thank you to Robert Spitz Foundation for this donation.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5H for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $100,000 to be used towards the operations and facility usage assessment project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Frank, could we just find out if the city hall expansion is also going to be included in this, in this usage assessment?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5I for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $150,000 to be used towards the digitalization of legal and other city documents project.
At this time, entertain a motion, item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5J for an induction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $200,000 to be used towards the Gateway Signature Branded Signs Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5K for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for a community violence intervention and prevention program in the amount of $847,225.28.
At this time, entertain a motion, item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Frank, on page 11 of 12, the wording states with this memorandum of understanding for implementation of the stormwater projects identified herein, it looks like it may be a copy and paste. The total of $847,225 is correct, but there's a sentence in there that, that's in regard to stormwater projects. If we could let them know that.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5L for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for tourism in the amount of $200,000.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5M for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor, Office of Economic and Community Development and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Multiscape Inc. to provide work and services for the Naog Multi-Court Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5M be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5N for an induction, a resolution. Appointment of Roe Hume as a member of the Scranton Civil Service Commission to fill the unexpired term of Christopher McClatchy beginning September 23rd, 2024 and expiring at the end of the mayoral term.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5N be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Boldenberg, this is the second appointment to this board in the last two weeks. There's only three members of that board. It appears from the backup that two members have resigned. So it seems kind of odd that two out of three members have resigned in the last two weeks. Could we just find out if they, if the administration knows the reason? I know there's been turnover on this board in the past as well. Seems to be a lot of turnover. So if we could just get the reasons why we're having so many resignations on the board.
We will all ask those questions.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.[1733.03] Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 34, 2024, in ordinance, closing and abolishing inactive special city accounts.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, filed to council number 35, 2024, in ordinance, amending the Human Relations and Discrimination Code to change the size of the Human Relations Commission.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move.
6C, reading by title, filed to council number 36, 2024, in ordinance, repealing antiquated charitable solicitation requirements.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move.
6D, reading by title, filed to council number 37, 2024, in ordinance, amending the city's administrative code to permit the city to publicly advertise certain bid opportunities online as an alternative to newspaper notice.
What is your, you've heard reading by title of item 6D, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 32, 2024, amending filed to council number 98, 2023, in ordinance entitled, General City Operating Budget 2024, to properly account for the application of the proceeds of the general obligation bonds series of 2024, which were used to refund the city's general obligation notes series of 2016, by increasing the debt proceeds account by $32,470,534.25, increasing the OPEX 2016 GO note active account, as noted, by $30,029,34.25, and adding a new expense line item account, as noted, titled, 2024 Series GO Bond SPA Refund, in the amount of $1,143,992.50.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
Mr. Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 33, 2024, amending filed to council number 98, 2023, in ordinance, as amended and titled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2024, to and including December 31st, 2024, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2024, so as to transfer an amount not to exceed $132,000 from the Bureau of Administration contingency account number, as noted, to fund clerical union raises that were not identified in the 2024 operating budget.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for Committee on Finance?
Mr. Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 107, 2024, appointment of Kathryn Bogacik as a member of the Scranton Civil Service Commission to fill the unexpired term of Walter Baron, beginning immediately and expiring at the end of the mayoral term.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 108, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on the behalf of the University of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $157,500 to be used towards the Weiss Hall Workforce Development Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 109, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the West Scranton Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $73,500 to be used towards the Field Revitalization Initiative Project.
What is the recommendation of chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 110, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Neighbor Works to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe Grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $258,842 to be used towards the Blighted Property Revitalization Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.